...who's made a difference by doing what's best for kids. Today's recognition goes to Rosemary and Kathleen, who are the masterminds behind Tacoma Ocean Fest, where 2,500 people go every year to play, think, learn, and care about the ocean. Tacoma Rotary's joined forces to support Ocean Fest. In particular, Tacoma Sunrise Rotary leads Tacoma Ocean Fest Youth Story Contest to inspire students. The core of the Tacoma Ocean Fest Youth Story Contest is to enable students at all readiness levels throughout Tacoma Public Schools and Chief Leshai School District to explore writing, filmmaking, data graphing creatively to communicate their research and values about the ocean and the environment around them. They have a theme, and this year's theme 2018-2019 was "Our Oceans, Our Lives, Our Future." To support students, free poetry and film writing classes were offered at the Tacoma Art Museum and at the Shatz Boys and Girls Club. Additionally, students were required to designate a sponsor, a teacher, a principal, a family member, in order to strengthen a relationship with a mentor during their creative process. Prizes and incentives were given as incentives for student participation. Every entry was guaranteed a coupon for pizza. Finalists were invited to a boat ride staffed with marine scientists and poets. The top three students in each division received additional cash and prizes. Overall, there were 63 student entries across divisions of poetry, filmmaking, and data graphing, with the majority of the entrants coming from students in Tacoma Public Schools. Ocean Fest as a whole brought to our community, is brought to our community by Tacoma Sunrise Rotary, Tacoma Rotary #8, Tacoma Rotary South, and Passport Rotary of Pierce County. Ms. Ponataki and Ms. Figatakis are volunteers, and they navigate the relationship to support each of the Rotaries alongside Tacoma Public Schools, the Tacoma Art Museum, and the Grand Cinema, as well as Round Table Pizza, Walker Walker Studios, and the Tacoma Youth Marine Center. They partner closely with Dr. Hannah Benrow, our Curriculum and Instruction Department, to navigate our system and work with our schools. The ladies have engaged with Susannah Pantone and our teacher librarians, and David Siff, who serves as an expert in better understanding our students from native backgrounds, so that these ladies could make the dream come true for our students, to make it a reality. They've had, they engage paraeducators, teachers, teacher librarians, and families to sponsor students in participating in the Tacoma Ocean Fest Youth Story Contest. It's because of Kathleen and because of Rosemary that this was made possible. They led the work in their spare time as volunteers because they are passionate about providing access and opportunities to science, to literacy, and to storytelling, to celebration, and to learning for our students here in Tacoma. So it is with gusto that the Community Partnership Office recommends that the Board of Directors, Directors recognizes the Tacoma Ocean Fest as being awarded the Gold Star Community Partner Award for the month of September 2019. And I'm going to ask that Rosemary and Kathleen come to the stage.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All of us in the Rotary and Youth Story Contest are so very grateful for this award. We've worked really hard to make the contest equitable, accessible, and inclusive for all students, and to encourage their voice and skills, but we really couldn't have done it alone. We've had such strong collaborators in the district, Angie Neville in Curriculum and Instruction, David Siff at Indian Education, Student Services for those with special needs, and especially your Director of Innovation Hannah Benrow, who has worked with us to benefit the students. Teachers like Kathleen Hall at Jason Lee, Gary Crooks at Meker, and Mimi Walker and Emmett Johnson at Lincoln are shining examples of how the arts can inspire students to achieve. In particular, the district library programs and school librarians, especially Kristin Sierra at Lincoln High School, has allowed us to serve the community equitably. They help us encourage the students to participate, to be really creative, to develop leadership skills, and to care for our beautiful waterways. We're so grateful. But despite all this, there are still students who are not being served. We're hearing that there are students who think they are not good enough to enter the contest. You can find their schools in the report we're providing to you, and this is our ask. When you meet those students, please tell them that they are good enough. Listen to them and tell them that their voice, every kid's voice, is important and deserves to be heard. Thank you.
So as the Director of the Tacoma Ocean Fest, which supports the Youth Story Contest, I echo everything Kathleen just said. I'm so grateful that Tacoma Public Schools has visionary teachers, librarians, and directors who support community programs like ours to give opportunities to our students. And as we can see from recent climate news, it's more vital than ever that our young people are given the knowledge, the literacy, and the voice to be leaders in how we treat our ocean and our planet. My dream is that ocean literacy would become a part of every student's curriculum, but in the meantime, the more encouragement and support we all can give your teachers, librarians, and students to encourage and support our students, the better off the whole community will be to protect our ocean. Thank you. And I'm going to bring you the reports right now.
Thank you.
Human Resources, School Year Start.
So I've asked Dr. Nolan to come to us and talk to us a little bit about human resources. This is one of their busiest times. They've been busily, busy, busy working. So Lisa, can you give us your report?
Yeah, you bet. Before I get started, for any of our HR team members who are in the house, will you please stand up, AKA Team Awesome? Yay! Okay, the purpose this evening is to share key highlights of what it takes from a human resources perspective to successfully start the school year. While the focus will be on the numbers, I will expand on the why as we move throughout the presentation this evening. Let's get started. Okay, first of all, we must do our best to ensure that we endeavor to hire the right number of staff based on projections coupled with an understanding of our trend data related to staffing patterns. Ultimately, the objective is to reconcile projective numbers of FTE with actual numbers of FTE in order to effectively provide for the educational environment. From the moment spring staffing begins, it is crucial that we monitor the staffing procurement barometer closely in order to proactively and appropriately respond for the fall. This slide provides you with a big-picture understanding of the hiring environment related to certificated staff for the start of this school year. Of course, a great start to the school year includes an assurance that people will be paid appropriately and on time. In order to get to this non-negotiable outcome, it requires accurate manual processes that lead to automated output, as well as a strong partnership between human resources and payroll. While this process occurs for all employees across all employee groups, these numbers that you see on this slide provide you with a glimpse of the number of actions necessary to support our certificated staff members. You'll see on the certificated salary changes that we have the number 2,874. We don't have that many certificated staff, but there are individuals who are in more than one assignment. Furthermore, we must have highly effective leaders in our schools, as well as highly talented administrators who provide direct support to schools. To get this school year started, we had, of course, some administrative hires. The admin transfers that you see on this slide are inclusive of seven administrators who were appointed from one administrative position to one considered to be a promotion. For an example, an assistant principal who became a principal. This number is higher than in previous years, given the fact that we experienced administrative position eliminations last year, and one of the guiding principles that was established was to first lean on our existing workforce for open positions. And now for a fun fact to illustrate the succession planning that takes place within Tacoma Public Schools and our keen strategic values placed on developing our leaders. Seventy-eight percent of our administrative hires were from internal, and 22% were external. And of course, the hiring continues. Our classified staff are indispensable when it comes to supporting our initiatives and our students. These positions range from nutrition services, professional technical employees, paraeducators, and more. Now that we've had an opportunity to look at raw numbers, I'd like to shift to the imperative role employee retention plays in the start of the school year. It is our belief that the importance of employee engagement cannot be overstated. Employment engagement strategies have been proven to reduce staff turnover, improve productivity and efficiency, as well as retain employees at a higher rate. Most importantly, engaged employees are happier, both at work and in their professional lives. When the educator is whole, they are able to offer a more robust experience in support of the whole child. As you can see, our rate of retention for all FTE-holding positions is nearly 90%, which indicates that our employees are overall satisfied with their experience in Tacoma Public Schools. But let's take another step, and let's understand collectively more deeply the rate of retention of our certificated staff. The analysis of certificated retention becomes even more paramount when we recognize that educational scholars and economic policy activists over the last several years have warned of an impending teacher shortage. In April of 2019, an article published by NEA Today entitled "Teacher Shortage Is Real and Growing and Worse Than We Thought" speaks to the notion that the most acute impact of a teacher shortage is at our schools of poverty. This one example alone justifies the need to explore this data with scrutiny in the here and now, and couple it with the willingness to develop a vision for the future. Additionally, we must get courageous about the data. It's not enough that we look at Tacoma Public Schools in isolation. We must understand how our retention rates compare to other districts. In order for us to gain an independent perspective about how well we perform compared to other districts, our Human Resources Department engages with Act Point KPI, which is a performance management system that uses over 500 proprietary KPIs pioneered by the Council of the Great City Schools to help districts ensure that every dollar is spent in service of their broader mission of student achievement. Let's see what the Act Point data reveals when it comes to retention. What you see here is the 17-18 teacher separation rate, and I'm going to get into the why it's 17-18 in just a moment. The Act Point data reveals that our rate of retention is 15.27% higher than the national median. This data graph is taken straight out of the Act Point report and provides a visual for how high above the median TPS was in the 17-18 school year when it comes to the rate of separation. Please keep in mind that Act Point runs one school year behind because they must migrate all the data from the participants at the close of a school year in order to report viably. This is the latest information available through Act Point. Our internal data for the 18-19 school year informs us that we continue to hold a strong position in this data category. This meaningful data helps to inform our practice and certainly served as a data compass as we prepared for this 19-20 school year. But let's get back to that very start of this year. This number, some might call it lucky 13, represents the number of teacher vacancies on the first day of school. This is a monumental celebration and a testimony to the fact that teachers truly do choose Tacoma. You may recall that we were faced with position eliminations and a reduction in force last spring. Combined with latency in staff resignations and funding clarity, our recruitment efforts were delayed. Nonetheless, we were able to start the school year with this very competitive number. I'd like to share a fun fact. Not only is our data trajectory strong for the number of teacher vacancies on the first day of school, but the evidence through the benchmarking available through Act Point confirms that we are well above the national median. Let's take a look. Our position in the data graph is very impressive, but why is the indicator of teacher vacancies on the first day of school important? This KPI is demonstrative of healthy planning for staffing, deployment, and ultimately provides direct support for the learning environment from day one. It is essential to find the optimal point for staff procurement. Simply put, if you hire too many teachers and enrollment comes in under, you are over-obligated, and this raises a huge financial burden. If you drastically under-hire, then recruiting efforts and recruiting teachers after the start of the school year can pose a significant challenge. Once again, this data graph is taken right out of the Act Point report and provides a visual with how high above the median TPS was in the 2017-2018 school year. Keep in mind, however, that we're constantly monitoring this data. For example, in the year 2014-15 start of the school, on the first day of school, we had 24.8 teacher vacancies. We continue to improve through time, and we believe that we have found what many HR professionals across the nation call the sweet spot. Our Human Resources team has engaged in a robust campaign to elicit increased participation in our exit interview survey when an employee leaves the district. Our 17-18 exit survey participation numbers put us in the upper quartile of the Act Point data graph when compared to other districts, and our data for 18-19 is even stronger. But why in the world are these surveys so important? The answer is quite simple. They have given us new insights into why employees separate from the district and have provided us with thematic district attributes that they appreciate. What do people love about Tacoma School District as reported by their exit surveys? There's three big themes. They love our great professional development opportunities. They love the competitive wages and benefits, and they cite leadership who is dedicated to supporting staff and students. And guess what? There's three big reasons why people choose to leave as well. Those reasons are: number one, retirement, natural attrition. They get to retire. Number two, life changes, such as relocation, family reasons, and/or medical reasons. Those vastly are the largest reasons why people leave Tacoma. And then finally, our other big category is what we call "other," and this encompasses all other reasons, including where we may have felt that a resignation was mutually Human resources exists to provide support to all departments and all employees. We value our professional relationship with all of our stakeholders. On behalf of the entire Human Resources Department, I would like to thank all of our collaborators for working alongside of us in the spirit of supporting every student every day and launching a successful start to the 19-20 school year. And finally, in the spirit of supporting the whole educator, it is our pleasure to do our best to connect the right person to the right job. A whole educator supports a whole child.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Lisa. Next item on the agenda, 6.2, the School Year Startup, Superintendent Santono.
So that was a great report. I think it really talks about our efforts to get a teacher in every classroom. I just wanted to report that we had lots of great stories about the first day of school, both on the sides of students and teachers and community all coming together to welcome students to their schools. I especially want to do a shout-out to Mary Lion Elementary. If you haven't been over to Mary Lion, please go take a look at it because it is an amazing school and such a credit to the community. We're real excited. I did my, I recorded my first day of school message in the library at Mary Lion, and I couldn't figure out where the front door is. I know, that's not good. But I was kind of, so anyway, I went through the parking lot, and there's a fence across the back so you can't get in, and the custodian just happened to come out and see me, and so he unlocked the gate and had me come in, and I said, "So what are the, you know, how's it going?" And honest to goodness, he did a jig down the hall. He said, "This is the best place you've ever seen." So it was just so exciting to see how happy he was about being at the new Mary Lion and being in charge of taking care of it. So I think that's a, that's a great commentary to the first day of school. It's been great. Secondly, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, it's that time of year when we've had hours and hours of a staffing team sitting together. Lisa didn't talk so much about how, how hard it is to balance classes, and usually at this first meeting, we have parents that come and are legitimately upset about some of the changes that I've had to make about staffing, and you know, you know, they look at it as a failure on our part to really care about kids. And so I just wanted to make sure, I've asked Kevin if he would pull up our video that talks about what happens when school starts and we have to balance. And I want you to know, we start, you know, in June, starting to look at what are some of the effects that might happen, but it always takes some real work at the end. It would be great if we could just get all children to come in packs of 25 or 24, and then just walk into third grade and have three classrooms of 24, but unfortunately, that doesn't happen. So Kevin, would you play that video, and then I'm just going to have a couple of comments.
Why in some schools do students and teachers get shifted around after the first two weeks of the school year? It seems disruptive. Great question. There's a good reason for it, but it's a little complicated. Every fall on the first day of school, each class doesn't always have the exact number of students we predicted. After all, a lot can happen over the summer. Families move away, others move to town, and others relocate to new neighborhoods, which means the number of students no longer fits our projected class sizes, making things a little complicated. So how do we predict student class sizes? The whole process starts in December when an expert demographer projects fall enrollments. They look at things like population, registration, birth rates, economic trends, housing, and more. These projections also include choice enrollment, class size limits, and other factors such as students moving up from lower grades. By February, we're planning how many teachers to assign to each school and each grade level. Then we recruit and hire teachers, so all the planned classrooms will have a teacher on the first day of school. Sounds good, right? Well, not quite. Remember how we said families move during summer break? Well, those moves mix up our class size predictions, and we have to straighten things out, even if it's not always ideal. After the first two weeks of school, the picture gets clearer. Sometimes, small classes are combined, while overcrowded classes may force students to new classrooms. Other times, teachers will shift to new classrooms or even a whole new school. Some years, the shifts are minimal; other years, they're more dramatic. But we're always trying to reduce the impact on our students because, in the end, the goal of Tacoma Public Schools remains the same: help students be successful every day.
Thank you, Kevin, and I just want to reiterate to the community and to our public that we work really hard at this, and the decisions are difficult. It is a resource issue on top of everything else, is that we're really trying to do the best we can to make sure that we're good stewards of the public's funds and resources while we get the best decisions. So we appreciate the help of our principals and our staff that really help us to make this decision, and to those of you that have, you know, we've had several parents that have written letters that said, you know, "We don't like the way you did this. We just want you to make, to make sure you know that we really make an effort to do this fairly and as quickly as possible. We hate it when we have to make changes this late in the year." But some of the issues that you saw portrayed in the video are exactly what direct this action. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? Vice President Winsko.
Just a question about how many students, how close are we to what we predicted district-wide?
Yeah, it's a complicated number, a complicated question to answer. I think that what I would say to you is, we are up at the elementary, we're up at the high school, we're down a little at the middle school, and from a basic ed perspective, how many students we're seeing in basic education, we're up about 200, 250 kids. And so the numbers are changing every day as students enroll or disenroll. We still have some students that maybe haven't shown up yet, that haven't been dropped out of the system. Our official count date is October 1st, so we're working with all of our registrars to make sure that we're getting all of those students captured in the system or uncaptured in the system so that when we do our October count that it's accurate. We do budget for a decline in students as part of our natural budgeting process, so the demographer gives us a number, and then we do a discount to that so that we are giving ourselves a little bit of cushion in case the students don't show up. This year, we are above our projected, so our cushion plus the projected amount will give us a little bit of additional resources to ensure that we are able to move forward with funding all of the activities of the district. We did have to hire 10 new basic education teachers beyond what we had planned for, so that those resources will help to go to cover the costs of those teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Leon.
I believe it's worth just talking a little bit of the details that you're discussing. It's the, we can understand the discomfort, the pain that these parents and these students go through in the classrooms where the teachers moved out. It sounds like there was a very effective teacher that was bonding and teaching kids really well, the math, at Wilson High School. And this formula, it's quite important to making sure we balance the number of students to teachers. Also, that correlates with the union contract, which has to, which involves seniority of teachers, and who gets moved by that contract is what we have to abide by. So that's the reason why some teachers that might seem more senior but don't have as much seniority in our district may be moved. So it's, it's difficult.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, it's Washington State seniority that we look at versus even local-level district seniority, as in accordance with our CBA.
One question on that same issue. So our current collective bargaining agreement is based, displacement is based on seniority and not merit?
That is correct, as the initial basis, Washington State seniority, and then for a tie, we can look at credits and credentials.
Okay, and that was the, I think, the number of emails that we've seen, a lot of communication talking about the qualifications of this particular teacher, and that merit isn't something in the current collective bargaining agreement that takes a priority over seniority?
That is correct.
So we're just abiding by the collective bargaining agreement that all teachers operate under, and it has the potential going forward to be more merit-based, but we currently are obligated to the contract that's in place. Is that correct?
Yes, and our contract, a quick reminder, was just recently ratified, and we're in a three-year agreement. So for the next three years at least, we will continue to abide by those governances.
Okay, and how have we communicated with the families? I know that the teacher provided an email to her students and families, her perspective on why she was leaving. Have we, have we been able to provide additional factual information about the process and how the decision was made? And that, I had people express concern that she had been terminated, and so she wasn't fired, she was just moved to another school based on the enrollment numbers where we needed an additional math teacher? Is that, is that correct? And if so, how have we communicated that back to those families that are impacted? Because I get, I get, hey, your kid's just starting, you know, mine are 16, 13, and 11. We're just starting to get into a rhythm, and all of a sudden, if you have a teacher removed, that, that has a significant impact. And as a district, I know we've been striving to be better communicators. So how have we handled this particular incident?
I'm going to ask Doug, Dr. Hostetter, to come up, and while he's coming up, I will say that we wrote a letter to all the parents and community members involved explaining. I think we can get you a copy of that if you want to see what it, but it pretty much outlines the reason for the displacement and the collective bargaining agreements that were involved.
And the fact that the school had to lose a 1.0 teacher, FTE. And it was the principal's decision based on what the enrollment was in each department, as to what department that was. That was nothing that was dictated by the school district in any way. Is Doug Hostetter in the house?
I am in the house.
Come on up to the microphone.
As Doug is making his way forward, I will point out that we do have a communication protocol that's well-established. And, you know, sometimes even outside of all the best intentions and systematic approach that we have to doing this, emotions can interfere and the communication can be slightly derailed. But collectively, we work together to get it back on par.
Yeah, I was standing back there, wondering if I needed to come up, because she was kind of answering all that I had to offer. But Bernadette Ray, the principal of Wilson, sent out an email at 8:34 this morning to all the parents that emailed us with concerns about this teacher's displacement. And so that went out, all the parents, I believe she forwarded them to the superintendent and the board members, so that you had a copy of what her response was.
And is that just to the families that have reached out, or is that to every family that's impacted by the displacement?
Just to the families that reached out.
So I would ask that we send it out to all of the families so that everybody has the access to the same information and not just the families that took the initiative to reach out to us?
Right.
That would be great if we could make certain that all of those families that have been negatively impacted understand the, the reason why it happened?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
We'll move on to item number seven, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your simple input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. How many speakers do we have this evening?
Six.
Six. So you'll be allotted the full three minutes. Superintendent?
Yes, speaker number one is Ariel Fletcher, followed by Kate Landy.
Thank you so much this evening for allowing me to speak to you. I wanted to thank Superintendent Santorno especially for what, before I speak, for all your work and the presentation before speaking that helps, as a parent, to understand fully about what's going on within the district and particular schools. I have a student at Wainwright Intermediate. She's in seventh grade. She has had two schedules, she will have two schedule changes this month alone, which, as you've addressed, can be burdensome and hard on the student and the families. So the first change was because the seventh graders were not assigned a science class. And my student was in a Chinese class. And I can tell you that last year, she was exceeding in that class. So it was really disappointing when she had to be taken out of that class. But we understand that changes happen. She needs to adapt. So we were getting ready for this change to happen and for her to have a smooth transition. But we've been told by the principal, Basil, that there's going to be another change. Her history teacher will be displaced and move somewhere else. I believe it's Gray Middle School, but I'm not 100% sure on that. And so that's another hardship that she'll have to deal with and adapt to, which I fully respect and understand that this is how this has to be. But as a parent and outsider perspective, it's hard. And my student doesn't like it. She cries. She cried about Chinese, which is, you know, she taught me how to say ni hao, which is hello. She taught me how to, and I'm probably gonna mispronounce it, but thank you, which is xi shu, xi shu, or shu shu, sorry. She can pronounce it better than I can. And so it's just, it's just really disappointing that she excelled in something and it got taken away. That said, one other thing I'd like to address is that Panther Day, which is a back, or kickoff to the school year at Wainwright Intermediate. It happened during the summer, a couple of weeks before school started. And I wanted to say that I appreciate that there were certain community groups present within the event. A couple of them were faith-based. The only issue that I had was one of the community faith-based groups was playing Christian music during the event. I do not know if that's allowed. I just feel that there could be community members, students, and family supporters there who may not believe in that religion and may have had an issue or offense to what was happening. So I wanted to just bring that, bring that up. And that's it. And thank you so much for all your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Landy, followed by Dustin Hefferbecker.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Kate Landy. I am the proud mother of an eighth grader and a fifth grader at Bryant-Montessori. I'm also a family physician, serving our community in South Tacoma and the Hilltop for the past 18 years. I have a master's degree in public health and an assistant professor of clinical medicine at the University of Washington. I am here this evening both as a parent and as a health professional to urge the board to strongly consider implementing later schooltimes for the older children in our district. Due to advances in teen brain science over the past 20 years or so, we now know much more about how our kids' brains work. Starting at about age 10 to 12 years old, kids experience a dramatic two-to-three-hour shift in their innate sleep cycles, compelling them to stay up later and giving them the biological need to sleep later. On average, our high schoolers are falling short on sleep by about two to three hours a night. When this happens day after day, the lack of sleep causes kids to be irritable, moodier and more distractible, and more unfocused on learning during the day, which very much makes them look like a child with ADHD, though they may not be at all. Because of this intense brain development during this stage, the lack of sleep during this very susceptible phase of life really increases the lifelong risk of mental illness as well. Sleep, of course, is an absolutely essential function for learning and for the processing and retention of complex information. As high school progresses, of course, we want our kids to be thinking more complexly, more creatively, and more critically. And just at this time, we're causing them the greatest amount of sleep deprivation by starting school so early. Studies now show that the ideal school time, school start time is 8:30 a.m. or later. School districts across the country that have paid attention to the science and delayed start times have had really unequivocal success. Though many of the studies may be small, repeatedly, these students have made gains in attention and attendance, tardiness, GPAs, SAT scores, and have even dramatically reduced car crashes in this age group. Disadvantaged students have actually shown the greatest gains. The kids that are on the margins with learning challenges and home environments that may not support their academic success have the most to gain by getting more sleep. We all acknowledge that change is difficult, and it takes time. And as a working parent, I can very much appreciate that. On the other hand, we cannot ignore the science any longer. It is time for action in the form of formal superintendent-supported planning, this year and next, and implementation of later start schooltimes in the 2021 and 22 school year. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for all that you do in supporting our kids' education.
Thank you.
Dr. Hefferbecker, followed by Dana Peregrine.
Kind of wish I could have gone first, because I have a lot of the same things to say. So I'm Dustin Hefferbecker. Pretty good job with my last name. It's a good effort. I'm a pediatrician at Mary Bridge Children's Hospital, where I care for sick and hospitalized kids. And I'm the father of four boys, all of which attend Tacoma Public Schools. I have one at Jason Lee and three at Lowell Elementary. And I was educated under the same system. And I remember very clearly in medical school, learning about the term "phase delay", the concept that we all experience, I think personally, and see in adolescents that we know, where they go through the process of falling to sleep later and then also sleeping in later. And during medical school, I learned that this is not simply a choice and a behavioral process, that this is actually biological, and this is related to circadian rhythms and changes that happen as part of the physiologic state of adolescence. So why does that matter? Well, studies, as Dr. Landy had mentioned, very clearly show that this impacts cognitive function, which is gonna impact performance and effectiveness of every day and every hour and amount of time spent at school. And maybe equally important to that, it's also gonna affect mental health. As an inpatient pediatrician, I am caring for far too many adolescents who are coming in for suicide attempts, and that number is increasing, it seems like, every year. And sleep deprivation and poor sleep hygiene is something that we see routinely when we're caring for these kids. Other districts have seen that have made this change and impact in performance. And some small studies that have looked at students' self-reporting of their health and well-being, including mental health, have shown that they've had a positive impact with this change. As Dr. Landy also said, I know it's not a small deal. A change like this would impact after-school events, sports. It would impact childcare for parents both before and after school. And these are considerations that have to be taken into account. I also know that there's a lot on your plate in terms of other priorities. There's buildings that need repair and update. There's efforts to secure funding for that, and those are important, and I'm supportive of those as well. My ask is that this be moved higher on the priority list if it's not already. That it be something, that not be pushed back, because I think that we've learned from the experience of others and the studies that have been done, is it has a known positive impact on school performance and mental health and well-being. And with a middle schooler in sixth grade, a fifth grader, and two kindergarten twins, I'd love to think that they have that advantage of getting to sleep in a little bit later, because I already see my 11-year-old having to drag him out of bed at seven, actually, 6:45 every morning to get ready for school. And I would love for him to have that extra hour and a half to perform at his best. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Dana Peregrine, followed by Jamie Clever.
Hello, esteemed school board members and Superintendent Santorno. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. I am here as a parent and with the support of other parents that I've talked to in strong support of a full study session on the importance of sleep for adolescents and on the impacts of school start times, on the amount of sleep they get, as well as on their natural circadian rhythms. Yesterday, my daughter started classes at the University of Washington in Seattle. She graduated in June from Stadium High School. One of the biggest drivers for her in picking her classes was she did not want to feel the way she felt at the end of her high school career at Stadium. There was more than one occasion during her senior year where we sat on her bed together and we cried because she could not understand why she had such little motivation. She could not understand why she had lost this love of learning that she had that we had both engaged with and seen and had such fun with in our early school years. And my, and my daughter, she loved learning, and she's one that did everything right. She studied hard, she turned in her homework, she engaged with school, she took AP classes. And she came from a background of privilege. As I was reviewing some of the research and data on sleep and the impact of sleep in adolescents and lack of, I was shocked. One of the negative impacts of disrupting circadian rhythms and getting lack of sleep was lack of motivation. Other impacts were decreased, increased absenteeism, increased mental health issues, increased motor vehicle accidents, and decreased graduation rates. You have a lot on your plate, I know. So many important issues. I come from a health background, worked in the health area for 20 years. I understand the, the risks of underestimating a seemingly simple health action. Tacoma has spent so much time in energy and whole health initiatives. It would be a tragedy, I think, and an underestimation to think that school start time might not impact all that positive work negatively by the time our kids get to high school. We have spent so much time and energy on graduation rates and have such great work on that. Affecting school start times and changing those could push us over the top in graduation rates if some of this research, looking at it and how it does impact graduation rates if our kids don't get enough sleep and start school so early. So I ask you to take the time now to Tacoma to look at this issue. So many school districts have done it. Seattle has done it. Mr. Island has done it at Accordis. It's our turn, it's our time to have a study session on this and study the impacts of school start times for our high school kids. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Jamie Clever, followed by Wanda Effinger.
Hello, my name is Jamie Clever, and I am a fourth-grade teacher at Northeast Tacoma Elementary School. At least, I was a fourth-grade teacher. After three and a half weeks with my class of kids, that's no longer the case. Three and a half weeks of building relationships and learning routines. Three and a half weeks where I made leaps and bounds with a student with behavior struggles by teaming with his parents. Three and a half weeks of requesting, meeting, and moving to next steps already for kids who need academic intervention. Three and a half weeks of blood, sweat, and tears to get this group up, running, and learning. And now, after all this, I was told on Tuesday I will become a fourth, fifth split. Why? Because after waiting three and a half weeks for the district to solve the issue of our fifth-grade classes having 32 students each, after fighting to add a new teacher to solve this, the district decided our students don't deserve that. The district has instead decided to make my class a split and to disrupt all seven third-through-fifth-grade classrooms. 180 students disrupted after three and a half weeks. They've decided to disrupt the third- and fourth-grade classes that have already started running smoothly and bonding instead of solving a problem in just two fifth-grade classrooms. We also already have a third, fourth split. With the solution we were giving, given, we have just a few spots open in third-through-fifth grade before we are again over cap. Plus, we're losing at least a full instructional day to get everything switched and settled in. On top of which, we have a 50 apartment complex that just started leasing in October. This is all hap, this is happening all over the district. It's not just me or my colleagues. Splits are being made to solve class size. Classrooms are being filled to cap and more to solve size. Why are we disrupting classrooms and overloading teachers instead of hiring more teachers? The answer to all this is because apparently it's too expensive to do what's best for kids and hire a new teacher. I'm a TPS mom as well, and my daughter deserves better. All our kids deserve better. We were told there's no money, yet positions that were cut last year, non-classroom positions, are being added back. Every child, every day. It feels more like every dollar, every day. If this district really believes in the whole child every day, we should see that in your actions. We should see that in our classrooms. It's time to reconsider your choices about hiring teachers and upping class sizes to save a few dollars. I'm asking you to fix this, to change policy, to uphold what you put out for all of us to see.
Wanda Effinger, followed by Tamara Hilton.
Hello, my name is Wanda Effinger, and I want to talk about crosswalk safety. So we are-
Can you hold the mic right up to here?
So we're putting staff members out at our crosswalks. They're untrained, and they're putting our students at risk. I've been watching some of the crosswalks and some of the behavior I'm watching. And there's been crossing, adult crossing guards trolling their flags, not wearing vests, and not making sure the students are getting across the street safely, because when the kids are in the street, they come back. Anyways, I'm concerned about that, and I'm documenting it. So if somebody does get hurt, I'll have the documentation that I have told you that there's a risk, a danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamara Hilton? Tamara?
Thank you. Item number eight, the consent agenda.
A move approval?
A second.
Are there any questions or comments?
I think I have one, yes.
Doctor, or Director Leon?
Just for 8.4, just wondering how many, how many teachers are going to that conference? It didn't say how many. We can get that information later, if nobody's sure.
Which one is it?
Eight, which-
8.4, oh, A, sorry. Just A, just- Says that there are some members going. Is it a large group or not? If you're not sure now, we can get that answer later.
8.4 B or C?
8.4 A.
8.4 A. We'll get that information to you. I don't know if anyone knows how many are going to the ASTD. We'll get that information to you.
Yeah, didn't enumerate, didn't name the people, this one.
Okay, just listen to it later. Thanks. All the other, all the other ones have numbers of people, so no other issues.
Any additional questions or comments? Any additional questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. Item number nine, policy matters, there's none under consideration tonight. Item number 10, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org. About finance, we do not have a quarterly update tonight. Item number 11, curriculum and instruction. 11.1, approval of Bates Technical College five-year interlocal agreement for educational services.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of Career and Technical Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve the five-year interlocal agreement for educational services for Bates Technical College from September 1, 2019 through August 31, 2024.
I'll move approval.
A second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. Item 11.2, approval of contract with college board for the advanced placement exam fees for the 2019-2020 school year.
The Superintendent on behalf of the Deputy Superintendent recommends that you approve the contract with college board for the advanced placement exam fees for the 2019-2020 school year.
Move approval.
A second.
Are there any questions or comments? Director Leon.
So, wondering, just, my question is actually connected to 11.2 and 11.4, which we'll come to in a second. So, just wondering what the cost is. I know we're paying for the AP test, the cost per test. The reason I'm asking is just wondering what the cost would be for the college-in-the-classroom courses that are offered through the University of Washington. Those are not paid for by the district. I'm wondering about how many students we have doing college-in-the-classroom and what the cost would be to pay for that. I don't think we have the funds for that right now, but what it might take in the future. And part of my questioning is also around, has the idea of choice been given to the students in the past to choose one over the other? Because I understand that maybe, I know that many universities are accepting the score of three on the AP score now in the state. Is that correct? But not outside the state?
I thought it was dependent upon the university.
It's dependent on the university.
Yeah, there's plenty out of state that still take the advanced placement scores.
Good. And then the, if they get the college-in-the-classroom pass, then potentially they get-
College grant.
Credit in more, in more schools. I'm wondering if that opens up the possibilities for them to get more credit.
Absolutely.
So, lots of questions in there.
Yeah. So, you want to know about how many, how many students we have in college and high school?
It's just a rough estimate if we, if we can get that.
I'm going to ask Dr. Hostetter to come up again. My estimation is there's about three college-in-the-high-school courses per school. There may be a little bit more than that. Dr. Hostetter, you have-
I don't know the exact number, but like, University of Washington offers college-in-the-high-school at Stadium. And then you have Central Washington University, and you kind of asked about cost. Central gives us a great deal. It's $35 a credit for students. And then we also have TCC, which offers that opportunity at the three-partner schools, Sammy Soda and Idea. So, just to add one thing, the state gives subsidies to school districts based on free and reduced lunch counts. And so, our title schools, or our lower or higher free and reduced lunch schools, Lincoln, Mount Tahoma, and Foss, got subsidies to pay for five credits of a student's college courses. So, Foss didn't happen to offer college-in-the-high-school this year because of IB, but Mount Tahoma and Lincoln, if students take college-in-the-high-school, five credits is paid for by the state based on free and reduced lunch. So, but exact numbers, I can get them, but I don't have them memorized.
Good. It's good to hear that some of our schools are actually getting some of that paid for by the state, so.
It would be great, if I stand on my political soapbox, that all students in the district that are free and reduced lunch would have access to those subsidies. But the state currently only funds those schools in general that have high free and reduced lunch, so.
Good, thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. Item 11.3, approval of the highly capable comprehensive program and acceptance of grant funds for the 2019-2020 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of Elementary Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve the highly capable comprehensive program plan and acceptance of the associated grant funds in the amount of $854,159 from September 1, 2019 through August 31, 2020. Funding source, Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. 11.4, approval of the interlocal agreement between University of Washington and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2019-2020 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Executive Director of Secondary Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interlocal agreement between University of Washington and Tacoma Public Schools for college-in-the-high-school from September 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
Just a comment that it's been highly effective class for, just, for my daughter and some of her friends to take these college-in-the-classroom classes. So, I'm excited that they're being offered in our, in our district. So, and as we just heard, it'd be, it'd be wonderful to make them more accessible to kids who can't afford them in other schools. But it sounds like the state is preventing some of that from happening, so.
I just want to make a comment about that, too. So, I do know that if you take AP English and you pass the test, it counts as an elective credit in college. But if you do college-in-the-high-school and pass the class, it counts as the English credit, freshman English. So, that's a difference. So, this is actually much more preferable for the student to take than pass the AP test.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. Item 11.5, approval of contract with the Elements of Education Partners for the 2019-2020 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Executive Director of Secondary Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Elements of Education Partners contract for the 2019-2020 school year. Funding source, Sammy Soda and Idea budget, building budgets.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Director Leon.
So, question about just the total budget's 300, or 327,000, and then the per course is 2,800. That price per course is, I think I was getting some of this answered earlier, for the instructor to come in and teach a course to multiple students, not per student. You might have some of that information, or, no. You got that information?
Yeah. Assistant Superintendent Pace and I consulted on this, and we believe that that is accurate. If for some reason it's not, we'll touch back just to make sure that you're aware of that. But, yes, we believe that this is, somebody who comes in and assists in with a regular teacher or our district teacher to offer coursework that's beyond what we have in our current staff. And we believe it's per course. Per course.
Per course, right.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. Item number 12, business matters, 12.1, approval of contract with Blue Granite for the data warehouse project.
Chief Information Officer recommends that the Board of Directors allow the Superintendent to enter into negotiations to award a contract to Blue Granite. Funding source, Technology Levy Funds.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
I think you should explain what this does in like, one sentence.
So, this is continuing work to build out the Tacoma Public Schools data warehouse so that we have enhanced reporting capabilities across finance, HR, student data, and more as we continue to build.
Thank you.
I'm going to expand on that just because I think it was so well-written in what we received. Tacoma Public Schools continues to expand its data warehouse to drive data-driven decision-making across the district. We began this project with Blue Granite earlier in 2019 to construct the data warehouse. Through that work, our infrastructure was set up and configured, and student data was modeled. We now have a working student data model and begun importing finance data into the warehouse. We created a list of remaining work for additional data marks in the data warehouse in order to conduct the RFP. The warehouse will eventually incorporate all desired district data sources and allow us to report on them from a single platform. And I think that is so vital as an evidence-based, data-driven district to have that sort of technological resource, and it's a part of the tech plan. So, I'm excited to be at this point where we can go out to RFP to get closer to having this full capability.
And I would thank our Director of Data and Web Development at the back of the room, Jeff Ball, for those eloquent words.
Are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. Item 12.2, approval of the Silence Antivirus Annual Renewal.
Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Chief Information Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the renewal of the Silence Agreement for the 2019-2020 school year. Funding source, Technology General Fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
So, I've been reading about a lot of problems nationwide, and even Edmunds, I think, had a problem the other day, but I think we're on top of it. Is that correct?
We-
Just say yes.
We are all, yeah. Yes.
Sorry.
So, always trying to stay one step ahead.
That's good.
Like, it's a complex issue, right? There's system protection, and then there's user judgment.
It is. The IT world is not what it was even five years ago with the proliferation of data, mobile, everything, always-on technology. It gets harder and harder to protect, but we do our best.
Right, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. Item 12.3, authorize the Superintendent to negotiate and award a contract for the Safe Student Transportation System Project with Edgelog.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Superintendent to award Edgelog with the Safe Student Transportation System Project in the amount of $509,718. Funding source, Technology Levy Funds.
Move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
More of a comment. So, it sounds like it's, I mean, just so the public knows, this is a way to keep the kid, the parents will understand where their kids are with an RFID badge as they get into the buses and how close they are to home and those type of things. So, it sounds wonderful, and it sounds like a decent price for that. I haven't gone out and shopped myself for those, but I would have liked to have this when my kids are elementary, on the bus.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. Item 13, other business, 13.1, appointment of administrative staff member to Discipline Appeal Council.
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors appoint Don Kreider to the Discipline Appeal Council.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? I'd just like to thank Mr. Kreider for his willingness to serve. That's a very important committee, so we very much appreciate that. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries three zero. Before we move on to item 14, report to the Board, I'm going to give an alibi. I have to go catch a flight this evening, so I probably need to leave here about 7:30. But I've conferred with General Counsel. We no longer have any formal business, recognizing that we're right at the minimum of a quorum. If I leave, we can continue to receive a report with two Board members. Is that correct?
That is correct, and if you want to leave now, now would be a, we're to pause on the agenda. Otherwise, I'll just note for the record when you leave that we're no longer at a quorum.
Okay. I'm going to give the Assistant Superintendent an opportunity to finish, so.
It'll be short.
Take your time. I at least want 16 minutes worth. All right, 14.1, Strategic Benchmark Annual Report, Early Learning Preschool. Dr. Verhar.
We might be able to make it before you even have to depart.
That's right. We practice this.
That will be our goal, President Hines.
So, let's go.
Yes.
I'll start. Good evening, President Hines, Vice President Winskill, and Director Leon. Tonight, we are here to provide an annual report for Goal Number Three, which is early learning. This presentation provides you with the data on the number of students enrolled in our preschool programs for the 2018-2019 school year. The mission of our early learning program is to support and serve our youngest learners as they begin their academic journey, preparing them socially, emotionally, and academically for success in kindergarten and beyond. Empowering and equipping families to participate in their children's education is a critical component to the early learning mission.
We continue to offer six types of preschool programming across 31 of our 35 elementary schools and three of our early learning hubs. While each program has unique qualities and requirements, we provide common curriculum across all six programs. This year, we have implemented our new five-year Head Start Grant, and we have moved from 29 half-day classrooms to 20 full-day or duration classrooms. From June 1, 2018, to June 1 of 2019, we saw an increase of 83 students. The reason for this increase is twofold. All of our programs were filled to capacity, and our special education enrollment continues to grow and presented a need to add more classrooms. This year, we have added two additional classrooms for our students with disabilities, one at Manitow Park and one at Edison. We don't experience growth from year to year in ECAP and Title I and Head Start as these programs start with a fixed number of slots due to state and federal funding. The fluctuations or changes that you see in the student group data is minimal. Of note, the multi- or two-or-more races category and the Hispanic student groups represent a larger percentage of the enrollment as compared to the overall enrollment for the district. I covered each of these key findings just for President Hines to move us along as I was presenting the data slides. So, what are our next steps? The next steps that I have here for you tonight are just some highlights of the things that we'll be doing in 1920. We will continue our efforts to build connections with childcare providers in our community and provide professional growth opportunities, family engagement opportunities, and early screening and intervention through our Child Find. With the Early Learning Data Dashboard now complete, we'll be able to analyze the impact of the Tacoma Public Schools preschool participation and kindergarten performance as measured by the TS Gould Assessment. With a new federal Head Start Grant and new contract language, we will work to ensure we are following and adhering to all of the requirements. With the loss of 150 seats in Head Start, we will work with our partners to explore opportunities to expand our programs to regain our capacity. This includes applying for an ECAP expansion grant for the 2020 school year. The first day for the Head Start Full Day Program was Tuesday, September 10. Students, family, and staff are adjusting to having their children at school all day. If you have a chance to visit a classroom, you will see students engaged and adjusting well. We'll continue to work through the requirements of having 20 full-day preschool classrooms and build our five-year goals as required by the Head Start Grant. In collaboration with our Student Enrollment Department, Early Learning will spend this year planning and preparing to align all of our early learning enrollment processes with the new K-12 electronic enrollment system. And we plan to implement this new enrollment system for the ease for our families in the spring of 2020. In the appendix, you will find some data from previous years to use for your comparison. That's the end of our report tonight. What questions do you have for us? See, I told you I could do it. I'm here for you.
Plenty of time for conversation. Are there questions or comments? Director Leon.
Yeah, I think the community will be pleased to see the higher percentages of the minority groups in the preschool, so we appreciate that.
Vice President Winskill.
I guess I just have one question. Are the, especially at preschool, still half-day?
They are half-day, except for the extended-day program, which is, goes an extra hour and a half or so. They get out at 1 o'clock, the extended day. But our peer model classrooms are, and our DHH classrooms are half-day still at this point, yes. It's an AM and a PM class.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to draw attention to the way that the demographic information is presented. I really appreciate that context and historical context. That's something- That's something that I have noted for many years, is providing relevant contextual data, and it's helpful to see who is accessing these programs representative to who's in our district. And then I'll be interested as we, you know, the data warehouse coming online, all of these great things that are starting to mesh together to be able to determine, are there outreach opportunities for us to go and try to, and I'm going to channel Director Cobb through family engagement to make certain that some of these underrepresented groups understand these programs and that they're available and how they access them, languages as part of the communication. So, I, I think it's, it seems potentially simple, but the way, I just see this as really valuable data to begin picking apart, where's it working, and where do we have a chance to get better? Where do we need to do more? And I also appreciate this alignment with private sector providers as well, because I don't think it's incumbent upon the school district to provide these early education opportunities for all students. I think we want to make certain that as a choice district, that there may be programs out there where family, private programs, or it works better with a family's schedule. But if we're all working towards the same outcomes and the same standards, so that, and I know you've been right in the middle of leading all of that work, so I'm, I'm excited because I think this is an opportunity to really continue to close that opportunity and, and a gap, and, and this is going to be paramount in the work. So, thank you for your report. Any additional questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Assistant Superintendent Santoro got to visit a Head Start classroom yesterday at one of our schools and see our children as they were enjoying lunch and preparing for rest time. It's not nap time because they don't have to sleep, but it's rest time. So, it's, I would encourage you to, to get into one of our Head Start classrooms. It's pretty impressive what those, that staff is doing with children all day, three- and four-year-olds.
They were adorable. The only bad thing is there's a couple of them I would have liked to have taken home. They're cute. Thanks for making that.
Item number 15, Board Comments and Reports. I'll start with Director Leon.
I was volunteering at the stadium game last week, and not too many injuries. It was a tough, tough loss, but the team is really getting better. I just want to comment on the improvement in the coaching staff and how supportive they were of their students. They didn't have a JV team there last year in football, so that can take a while to recover from a program that didn't have a JV team. But it's important just to skill, just to have good leadership and good coaches that can help build character anywhere in any sport. So, that was fun. Just regarding the topic of delaying high school start times, I think we heard some thoughtful discussion from our public today, so I won't go, I won't review all the important information, but it was, it was powerful to hear about just our teenagers, our students suffering, and high-functioning people sitting there and crying with their parents and how we can really help. And that was a kid that came from advantaged backgrounds, but the disadvantaged kids really will benefit a whole lot more than, than kids that have more advantages. And I was, had just an excellent meeting with the superintendent, so starting to have these discussions, just processing unofficially. We haven't done a vote by the Board, of course. Everybody needs to understand that to move this into, into a formal forward process. But at least it was excellent to have a discussion with the superintendent from Bellingham who shared his experience around their change of the start time. They went and delayed their start time in Bellingham, so he shared that with superintendent and myself, what went well, what, you know, what were bumps and speed bumps and things we need to look out for if we do take this on, which I'm hopeful we will. So, I'll stop there.
Great, thank you. Vice President Winskill.
I do not have any report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Yesterday, Vice President Winskill and I were a part of the Citizen Audit and Finance Committee meeting. I appreciate the service of those community members that serve on that Board that help us ensure that the district is sound financially. I will be in Spokane for the WASDA Legislative Assembly, and my role is our legislative representative. So, as a reminder, we had provided through Tanya to you that broad WASDA legislation and understanding that of the 295 school districts, I think about 200 are rural with student enrollment under 2,000. So, it's always interesting to get into that group because the association has to represent the collective interests. But if there are items, you have about 24 hours to, if you, just make me aware if there's anything that you've seen, or if you want to share something now that you're adamantly in favor of or adamantly against, I would welcome that input. Vice President Winskill.
So, I'd say special ed should really be at the top because that's the biggest bang for the mon, for the dollar. If we get reimbursed greater amounts of money from the state, then we can spend the money that we spend locally on, on regular, our district stuff.
Thank you.
I'm going to get your, my recommendations soon.
Okay, ready. The one other comment that I have, I know last year, the legislature talked about lunch shaming. We've had conversations about how we engage students and families around programs that are available for free and reduced lunch and how we treat kids, and really trying to make certain that we are treating people with dignity and respect. And I had a, today, an experience where my sixth grader at Mason went up in line to pay for, with her lunch, and it was one of those situations where I thought my wife had put money on the card, she thought I had put money on the card, and lo and behold, we have debt. My daughter had a $5 bill. The worker said, "I'm going to take that $5 and buy down your debt." So, if that's happening in that manner, you know, I, I think Charlotte was kind of shocked. But I, it is the exact thing that we're trying to get rid of, is that sense of, you know, I mean, I just start to think about all of the implications of a student who, what if that's the last $5 they have to eat? What, you know, the, so, I don't want to single out any staff member. I want to make certain that systemically throughout the district, we understand that we want every kid to eat, that the payment, that's an adult issue. We'll figure out how to cover that, that a kid should walk up, and if he wants the hot lunch, he gets the hot lunch. He doesn't get the, oh, you don't have money to pay for at lunch. And, and that is something I think we have to get our arms around early, because I have to imagine that that incident today is not the only time that that's occurred in the district. And it was a good reminder to me that that has real impact.
I just want to emphasize, that is not the district's policy. We will definitely look into that incident and across the district, but that is definitely not our policy and procedure when it comes to our students.
And I, I appreciate that, and I want to make certain that if there's a training need, that the training need is addressed, and if there's a policy, if we need to formally specify what the expectation is of the Board, then I think there's a great opportunity for us to have that conversation, because I know anecdotally, I don't think any of us want to do anything that even implies lunch shaming. I think we want to err on the side. I would much rather have to figure out how to go and cover providing hungry kids with food to eat, and we don't means test it. We don't differentiate between who gets what lunch. So, if, if you would look into that, and I think it's well-timed, I know, and I'll use that as the segue to get into the announcement of future Board meeting, and I'm going to go out of order because we heard people tonight talking about bell schedule, and we have actually adjusted our schedule as a Board for the year. And on November 7, we're going to have a committee of the whole that's going to be focused on our top priority that the Board set at our retreat, which was the health and safety of students and staff. And I know that we've considered within that category bullying, nutrition, mental health, bell schedule, and that'll be a great opportunity for us to flesh out what the priorities are. I think that's going to be really great conversation. I've already been reading data on a number of those issues, but that, you can circle your calendar for November 7. That will be the first formal public conversation the Board has about that, that priority. Next Thursday, October 3. Well, I should say that the, the application process for the appointment to the Board closed today. We had 15 applicants. The Board will meet in executive session next Thursday, October 3, to begin to review qualifications of those applicants. Then on Thursday, October 10, we'll have a regular business meeting, and as a part of that business meeting, Board members will have the opportunity to provide recommendations for applicants that they would like to see interviewed. On Thursday, October 17, at 4:00 p.m., we'll conduct those candidate interviews in this room, and they'll be televised, and then we'll move into a study session at 6:00 p.m. that day. We'll come back on Wednesday, October 23 for a committee of the whole, and I believe that's going to be our first look at the budget policy, which is another of our priorities. We've not updated the budget policy since the year, it was 1999 or the year 2000. It's been about 20 years. And then we'll come back on Thursday, October 24 for a regular business meeting. Is there anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned at 7:30?